If we could all take our seats, please. Is this sounding worth a darn? How does this sound? Does this sound okay? It doesn't sound good. How does this sound?
Oh, that sounds odd.
Um, take that one. Really? But I was told to eat the microphone. Well, that's what they say.
Who's they?
I, I say that to people when they have the handhelds. Yeah, so eat the microphone. Okay. Stop, let's stop eating microphones and let's welcome people. Hi there. Good, good evening. Welcome to the, uh, regular meeting of the Placerville City Council for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five. If you would all rise and pledge the allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Thank you. And, excuse me, Councilmember Yarborough will be noted as absent today. Thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, some ceremonial matters. We have three proclamations. Uh, really good stuff today and very important. So, the first one is a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Day, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and Constitution Week, which is September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So, um, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville in recognition of Constitution Day on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Whereas, on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the founders of our nation signed the United States Constitution, establishing a framework of government that has guided and protected the American people for more than two centuries. And whereas, the Constitution remains a living document built on the ideals of liberty, justice, and the rule of law, and has served as a model of democratic governance around the world. And whereas, Constitution Day and Citizenship Day recognize both the historic signing of the Constitution and the essential contribution of citizens, both native-born and naturalized, in shaping and strengthening our democracy. And whereas, the str- the strength of our Constitution system depends not only on the institutions it created, but also on the active, also on the active and informed participation of the people it serves. And whereas, Constitution Week offers all Americans an opportunity to reflect on the enduring principles enshrined in our founding charter and to recommit ourselves to its values of equal justice, civic responsibility, and shared freedom. And whereas, the city of Placerville encourages all residents to engage in civic-like life, foster understanding of our constitutional heritage, and celebrate the rights and responsibilities that unite us as citizens. Now, therefore, I, John Clarici, Mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as Constitution Day, and the week of September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, as Constitution Week in the city of Placerville. Let us honor the vision of the founders, celebrate the contributions of our fellow citizens, and continue our shared work to form a more perfect union. So, hurrah for the Constitution. Um, look, I, as I like to do sometimes, a few factoids. Once, uh, once Washington DC was established as the, it was originally called the Federal City, um, the Constitution was moved there and it kind of banged around in some departments, uh, and places until, uh, nineteen fifty-two, when it was permanently housed in the National Archive. Uh, every evening, the Constitution is lowered into a bomb-proof vault, and then every morning it is raised out of that vault, so you can go take a look at it. Since it was moved to Washington DC, it has only ever been out of the district twice. Once was for the silver anniversary, I believe, of its signing, and then during World War II, when it was moved to the gold depository at Fort Knox for safekeeping. Everybody, if you haven't seen the Constitution in person, everybody should go and do it. The National Archive is an amazing place, by the way. Uh, but also, it is quite a moving thing to see the founding documents of this great nation. I have seen it several times, and every time I see it, it still makes me somewhat emotional to be in its presence. So, um, that's the Constitution. So, hurrah for all of us. That one. Um, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville declaring September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as Patriot Day. Whereas, the city of Placerville will always remember and honor the nearly three thousand innocent lives lost on September eleventh, two thousand and one, as our great nation experienced the worst terrorist attack in the history of the United States. And whereas, September eleventh and forever, will forever serve as a reminder of the United States, of America's tremendous strength and resilience in the face of devastating loss. And whereas, we owe a debt of gratitude to our military, law enforcement, firefighters, first responders, volunteers, and emergency services for the selfless courage they demonstrated in the face of terror while defending our great freedoms. And whereas, as Americans, we all must come together and work to unify our community in order to defend our great freedoms, ensuring that such horrific acts are never again repeated and that our nation remains the land of the free. And whereas, as Americans, it is September eleventh attacks, ensuring their memory lives on. And whereas, a joint resolution, Public Law one oh seven eighty-nine, approved December eighteenth, two thousand and one, the Congress, uh, approved on December eighteenth, two thousand and one, the Congress of the United States of America designated September eleventh of each year as Patriot Day, and by Public Law one eleven thirteen, approved April twenty-first, two thousand and nine, the Congress of the United States of America has requested the observance of September eleventh as an annually recognized national day of service and remembrance. So, now, therefore, I, John Clarici, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as Mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as Patriot Day, a day of service and remembrance in the city of Placerville. So, solemn yet wonderful observation there, uh, for that, uh, for that event. So, one more. You probably wonder why there's all those California flags out there. I hope you wonder, otherwise you're just driving around and not noticing what's out here beside the freeway. Alright, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville celebrating the one hundred and seventy-five years of California statehood, and it just so happens that's today. Woo-hoo. Whereas, on September ninth, eighteen fifty, California was officially admitted to the Union as the thirty-first state launching a rich and complex history of innovation, diversity, and progress that continues to shape our nation. And whereas, in the one hundred and seventy-five years since statehood, California has become a global leader in agriculture, science, arts, environmental leadership, technology, and civil rights, and our own community of the city of Placerville has proudly contributed to that history. And whereas, generations of Californians, past and present, have worked to build a more inclusive, vibrant, and resilient future reflecting the spirit of opportunity and perseverance that defines our state. And whereas, the city of Placerville joins communities across the Golden State in honoring this historic milestone and recognizing the shared values that unite us as Californians. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Clarici, Mayor of the city of Placerville, on behalf of the city council and the people of our city, do hereby proclaim September ninth, twenty twenty-five, as California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood, and encourage all residents to take part in commemorating this momentous occasion through community events, civic engagement, and reflection on our shared heritage and future. So, woo-hoo, happy one seventy-five. Once again, factoids. Uh, as we all know, James Marshall discovered gold about nine miles from here on January twenty-fourth, eighteen forty-eight, which means we became a state less than three years later, which just shows you, if you find a whole bunch of gold in one place, you can motivate people to do just about anything. Uh, ironically, the, about, what, three weeks after Marshall discovered gold, uh, the Mexicans handed us all this land in the, uh, in the, um, Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. And, uh, and then, of course, our own city here became a state, a city, four years after statehood. So, things happened very quickly, and we're either the fourteenth or fifteenth oldest city. I think we're the fourteenth, um, city, uh, in the state. So, we have shared most of this rich history with this wonderful place, and of course, the town was here, uh, before statehood. So, we precede, um, the statehood of this, uh, wonderful place we all call home. So, the Golden State is one seventy-five. One thing I do want to do, though, we do have a couple of first responders here, and I kind of went past our September eleventh thing, and so I would like to present this, you guys can fight over it. Uh, the, the proclamation, uh, to, uh, to our police chief and our fire chief.
You have to find a new official photographer now, too.
Oh, you're right. Just meet Natalie.
Yeah. That's part of your job.
It's part of the job description. Who gets to take the pictures?
My director must also be.
Talking about you out there. Okay. Um, so thank you very much. Do we have any comments on our ceremonial matters? Anybody wish to comment on any of those items? By all means.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Jacob Rigoli. Uh, I'm, uh, very proud to be a board member of Save the Graves. That's coming up. Uh, also a board member of the Historical Society and, uh, county commissioner for our, uh, County Historical Museum. In that context, I just wanted to add one quick comment about the, uh, celebration of California's birthday today. Uh, additionally, in Sacramento, at the California Museum, you can find the original state constitution on display, as well as several of the pens that were used to sign the Constitution. That'll be up for, I think, several more weeks, and it's worth a trip down there. That's at ten twenty O Street, uh, in Sacramento. Quick trip down there, and you get to see some of the original documents that formed the state of California. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That's good information. Anyone else wish to comment? Alright, we'll bring it back up here. Uh, do we have anything to report out of closed session? This is Abraheem.
The council did meet in closed session. There was no comment in advance of that. The council provided direction, and that's that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, do we wish to adopt this agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
With, removing item eleven point.
I hadn't heard that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought everybody knew. Sorry. Um, we do need to remove item eleven point one. It's a public hearing, uh, for notification purposes. So, it will be coming back at our next meeting, I think? Or a meeting, yeah, the next meeting, so.
With that amendment.
Okay, so, we have motion with the amended move.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Alright, uh, announcements, presentations to the public, brief comments by the city council, uh, Councilmember No.
I attended our employee pool party. Always a great event to honor and remember our employees who work really hard, and, uh, public service is sometimes hard, so we really do appreciate all the work they do, even if they don't get the appreciation every day they deserve.
I also attended the city employee party.
I was there, too. It was wonderful, and thank you, everybody, for putting on that great event.
Yes, and, uh, I will, uh, comment on that as well. It was a good, as always, a good event, lots of fun things, good food, good people. Um, we don't thank our employees enough, uh, as far as I'm concerned, and so, here's another one. Thank you, all. Um, okay, um, let's see here. Uh, oh, okay, so now we have six point, well, do we want to take comment on our comments? Does anybody wish to comment on the thing we did? None of you were, well, some of you were there, but okay. Hearing nothing, okay, we'll bring it back. Item six point two, a presentation on Placerville cemeteries. Mike Roberts, president, Save the Graves.
Hello, hello. I'm Mike Roberts. I'm president of Save the Graves. Uh, for those of you that haven't noticed, uh, we formed in twenty nineteen with a mission to, uh, uh, restore, preserve, and celebrate Eldorado County's, uh, rich legacy of, uh, pioneer cemeteries. So, uh, my intent was to come here and give you a quick update on the, uh, two cemeteries, which are in direct, actually, it's two and a half, in direct city, uh, purview, uh, that being, uh, Upper Town and, uh, Placerville Old City. And the third one, which is only a half, because you're split responsibility with the county, is Placerville Union. So, uh, by way of that, let's, uh, start with, uh, Upper Town. Uh, that's a thing you can't read, but, uh, it's, I'm gonna hand, you know what, I'll go ahead and hand these out. Now, this is a copy of, uh, last year's, uh, program, and there is a, uh, there is, uh, a lot of this information is in there, the stuff you can't read. Basically, Upper Town was a separate place, uh, and it was quite competitive with Placerville. You took a bus to get there. Uh, it was, there was a couple of, uh, primary families, uh, the Crockers and the Wigglesworths, and the Wigglesworths are still there. And the Crockers had no relation to the other Crockers. I really, I wish they did, that would be a much better story. But anyway, uh, this was the corner of Mosquito and Broadway, uh, and that's, uh, uh, the old Crocker store. Crocker was in the right place at the right time. He opened a hardware store right before the Comstock blew up, and he was right on the road, uh, and he did great, until he didn't. Next. Uh, you've got a nice interpretive sign out there, which is very cool. I'm a big believer in these. Uh, we, uh, wrote a grant for twelve thousand dollars worth of additional interpretive signs this year, and I'm gonna do one on Old City Cemetery, or, excuse me, Upper Town as well, but put it on the other end, so that you read about it on either way in. Next. The end of the Crocker store. Next. Uh, this is a, one of many beautiful headstones up there. The inscription is, uh, great. Uh, I can almost read it from here. Such is the way to eternal life, I believe. Uh, very Victorian spiritualist sentiment. Uh, the spiritualists kind of believe that the dead are walking around among us all the time, and they're never really gone. Uh, very interesting movement. We celebrated a little bit in last year's event, because one of them went crazy and killed a little girl. Next. This is what it looks like when you walk in, when the grass is cut. Pretty cool, huh? It's real pretty. Next. And if you haven't been up there, it's the parking lot of that Lutheran church up there. I, I don't, can't remember the name of the streets. Next slide. Uh-oh. Murphy's Law, is that it? Cool. Alright. I stopped by there right before I came here, just to make sure everything's in order. Uh, you're very fortunate to have, uh, a very, uh, caring type-A, uh, neighbor on the north side, who is very worried about fire danger, so he cuts the grass, uh, well into the cemetery every year, and the rest of it, of course, just grows, because you never cut it. You should, once or twice a year, that'd be nice. Uh, also, it's a fire hazard. So, uh, there was a tree down, the last time I was in there, somebody cleaned that up, hopefully you guys. Uh, but, uh, yeah, the tree, uh, didn't seem like it had destroyed anything, it was just laying on the ground. So, that's what the trees in cemeteries do, they fall down. I think that's all I got on Upper Town. Let's, uh, move on. What's the next one? Next, pick another folder, Dave. Pick a folder, any folder. Alright, so now we're in, oh, Placerville Old City Cemetery. Uh, this, too, was an embarrassing disgrace until last year, uh, but the Emblem Club adopted it. The Emblem Club is, uh, the ladies auxiliary of the Elks, or that's what they used to be, anyway. Uh, and like all the fraternals, they went into a steep decline, uh, in recent years, but like many of the female fraternals, which is kind of a oxymoron, but nonetheless, uh, the DAR and, and these women's groups, uh, are blowing up. Uh, the DAR in Placerville got so big they split into, we now have one in Eldorado Hills Folsom, and they're both well-populated and very active. Uh, and, uh, so anyway, the Emblem Club is booming, uh, and this is a big success for the local Emblem Club. The National Emperor, Empress, or whatever she is, came and, uh, we all bowed and scraped, and she gave, uh, the local gals a big, uh, award for their work here. So, they did the landscaping and, uh, repaired a bunch of fences last year, but didn't know what the heck to do about all the broken headstones laying on the ground. Well, it so happens that Save the Graves does that. Uh, and, uh, I had a volunteer that really liked it. He's, uh, you're gonna end up seeing several pictures of him here, but, uh, he doesn't, uh, he's got some issues, health issues. He doesn't do well on inclines, and this place is pretty flat. Uh, interestingly, it has a beautiful view of downtown in the back of the cemetery. So, this is the veterans' area. You can see all the headstones, shiny white and pointing straight up now. Keep going. This is the long grass, needs cutting. Next. Uh, that, we've repaired about eighty percent of the headstones. There's a few that are troublesome. Uh, this one, I need to borrow some lifting equipment. It's not something that we can do by hand. Those are pieces are bigger, I, there's nothing for perspective in there, but that, the piece on the left is about as tall as I am. Uh, so this stuff is heavy. And, uh, it's also, uh, Indian Diggins marble, which is, uh, very notable in that it's got the blue veining in it. So, it's, it's just a beautiful, beautiful piece, and we want to be really careful with it, and, uh, it's gonna take some heavy lifting equipment. If you know anybody that's got something like that, that we could borrow for a day or two, that would be great. Next. Uh, this is, uh, Dr. M. Kohin. He was an interesting guy. Uh, we're gonna see him later. Let's keep going. Uh, couple of, uh, young boys died. Uh, you can see, and on the next slide, we'll see the back, you can see where they were, uh, repaired. These headstones were just laying on the ground, and they're not big. You, you could pick these up and take them and put them in your garden as a decorative item, and people did that for years. So, in a cemetery like this, we've probably got ten to twenty percent of the headstones from the people that were buried. And you can tell, because there's, there's all these divots, uh, where the old coffins or no coffins, uh, collapsed. Next. Uh, this one is actually, uh, some of these pictures were at an angle, but this shows one that we haven't straightened. There's, uh, two types of stone in these old cemeteries. There, the oldest ones are marble. It's not the kind of marble on your countertop. This is old marble, uh, and it's a very soft stone, and, uh, it doesn't really age that well. It bleaches out and loses a lot of its content and gets light and brittle. Uh, the other type is granite, and it's like kryptonite. So, our focus is actually on the marble. Uh, this is a granite marker, so it hasn't been straightened. It's, it's okay. The, the, the reason we fix the leaners is, I, I'm a kind of a believer in the, uh, the broken window phenomenon, uh, even though the data for that research study was proven to be completely fabricated, it's still, it kind of makes sense if somebody's, uh, tweaked out of their mind at three in the morning, and they're looking for something to destroy, a headstone that's already leaning over is a pretty good target for a good kick. Uh, so we try to straighten them up, especially the veteran ones. Next. This one's on the ground and set in concrete, uh, uh, many years ago, some, if there's any really old timers here, I don't see anybody old enough, fuzzy, maybe you. Uh, remember a guy named Bob Built, Bob, ah, forgotten his last name, starts with a B. Anyway, they hired him to do about thirty or forty of these around the county, the most historic headstones. He didn't know what to do with them, they were broken, they're laying on the ground, he set them in concrete. Archaeologists hate this, because they say the concrete doesn't agree with the marble, and they're gonna fight, but they look pretty good to me. Uh, he did a good job, most of his stuff is still holding up well. Several in this cemetery got that treatment. Here's another one that was cleaned and stood up. Next. Next. Edit distance, kind of what it looks like up there. It's a spectacularly beautiful place, and I cannot tell you how much the neighbors love us. Uh, the, the neighborhood, like many around here, is, it transitioned, it's young families, and they now walk their dogs and children in the cemetery, and they adore us, uh, and the Emblem Club. Next. This is the view from the back of the cemetery right now, when the leaves on the trees. Love to see a few branches trimmed off, uh, but it's the other side of the fence, and I don't want to go over there. Anyway, we, we do that kind of stuff, though. Uh, we got, you know, battery-powered pole saws and, and do minor, uh, tree work when we have to, because it's expensive to get other tree work, you know, real guys in to do stuff. Next. Another one in concrete. Next. I don't remember what that is, but it's pretty. Next. Some are still broken. I told you, there's twenty percent we haven't gotten done yet. Here's one that's still on the ground in pieces. Uh, typically, these are the ones that are in bigger pieces that are difficult. Brian, who spearheaded this, chose the, uh, low-hanging fruit first. Next. Uh, we did, uh, a fair amount of work on the, uh, the steel plot fences. Uh, this is a wrought iron one, so we were able to piece it back together, get the footings back in place, uh, and, uh, it's, and basically got a friend who's a welder, ironworker out there to put it all together. So, that's nice. Next. Uh, this is the entrance on the left side. You can see, I've left a pile of gravel there. Uh, we use, uh, it's basically road base, conventional road base, which compacts really well. So, when you level these things up, you, you dig out one side, lean it over, pack in some road base, and stamp it down really good, and then level it back up, and then put layers of road base and dirt on top of that. It's a pretty simple procedure. Uh, anybody can do it. I've had volunteers doing it with, you know, that show up with no training or experience whatsoever. Not kids necessarily, but adult volunteers. Go. The Emblem Club got a Boy Scout to build a bench. Isn't that nice? It's made out of that, uh, uh, plastic decking material, so it should last a while. It's, uh, very nice. Next. And also, a, uh, they put up a new flagpole. So, the Emblem Club, in their heyday, put that flagpole out there, and I think it's nineteen fifty-five, and gave themselves a nice plaque, uh, and, uh, one more picture, we might angle up at it. There we go. So, anyway, it's, uh, a beautiful thing. They've got lights on it, so you can leave the flag up twenty-four hours a day. One of the neighbors is totally committed to taking care of all the flag stuff. So, that's a great example of how a community group can work with a local group and gets things done. Uh, I want to do the same thing over in Union. That was also the Boy Scout, uh, guy. That should be about it for that cemetery. Oh, yeah, there's the entrance. Uh, that big old fence is holding up pretty good, not great, but, uh, in a couple of years, it's gonna need some repairs, and that's, again, something that volunteer groups should be able to do. You can't really see it, but it's got a nice, the names in, in metal in the entryway arch. So, um, working with, uh, Dennis, uh, Nakashima, we, we decided to lock it up, uh, and he gave all the key volunteers keys, but if you want to go visit it, the, the lock on the pedestrian gate, you just lift it up over there. Okay, well, I'm gonna block that. Uh, but, uh, but, you know, the types of people that want to go in there and do damage are not listening to your meeting. Uh, anyway, that's it. I don't know what that is. All the same stuff, okay. Alright, true confessions time. I mentioned what a great job we'd done on the wrought iron plot fencing. There's another type that's even more ornate, it was super expensive in the day, and, uh, it was made out of cast iron. So, it's poured, a molten material. You can, it's impervious to welding or repair of any type, and, uh, Frederick B. of B Street, but more notably, if you're a California history geek, uh, a lawyer who became a major, major advocate for the Chinese during the worst of the Chinese Exclusion Act era. He was literally on the wharf defending these people in court every day. They made him the consulate and venerated him to this day in China. Uh, and he started out in Placerville. He had a store on the first-generation store on Main Street. Uh, quite an entrepreneur. He brought the telegraph to the West Coast, uh, putting the Pony Express out of business, in a way. But, uh, and then, uh, during that time, he, his second son was born and died within one year. Uh, he also built the house across the street from, uh, Union Cemetery, uh, which, uh, later on, Judge Bennett bought and exposed greatly, and it became the Sequoia Restaurant and is now the Wedgewood Wedding Venue. Uh, so, that's how B Street got named B Street. And, uh, um, anyway, he had this boy that, uh, got the croup at, uh, I think, uh, thirteen months and died, and he put that beautiful headstone there and, uh, put this super-expensive, uh, cast iron plot fence around it, uh, made up of seventeen panels, each of which is about as high as my chest, just as ornate as the day is long, all strung together. Keep going. Uh, well, there's more pictures of it here somewhere, but anyway, let me finish my confession. I wanted to fix this thing, and I had it in my mind, without doing any research whatsoever, that it could be repaired. Uh, it had been eighty percent, ninety percent laying on the ground for ever, uh, you know, many decades, uh, in many, many, many pieces, probably a hundred and fifty pieces, because there was all these tiny intricate parts, and they all broke. And, uh, anyway, I got friends with metal detectors out there, spent hours scanning And anyway, I got friends with metal detectors out there, spent hours scanning the area, gathered up all these little pieces, dragged them into my driveway, spent more hours trying to put it all together till I figured out, oh my God, they actually made four foot high pieces of this ornate stuff. I thought it was two, I thought it was two smaller pieces. Anyway, it's really hard to pour large things and there's exactly one foundry left in the region. That's in Sutter Creek, the Knight Foundry. I took it up there, twenty thousand dollars estimate to repour it. So I should have never taken it out of the cemetery. I violated all sorts of rules on that regard. But to make up for that, I'm going to patch together one panel of it and put a big interpretive sign about Frederick B. and his contributions and the history of wrought iron versus cast iron that will satisfy all the iron geeks there are. That's the best I can do. End of true confession. Another wrought iron fence we fixed with more long grass. Next. Anything else there? That's it? Okay. What other folders do we have? Can you go up a layer and see what? There should be a Union Cemetery folder there and a Union Veterans Project Cemetery folder. Your computers are slower than mine. All right. This is, this weekend at Placerville Union Cemetery, somebody moved in basically, habitation trash. And this is really ugly right now because Save the Graves is coming up next month and we are rehearsing. This thing is a grand, very real theatrical production. Almost a year it takes to put one together. They're deep into rehearsals and they rehearse in the place where they're going to be performing. And for the last, over the weekend, they were afraid to go in any farther. Next. It's completely overgrown up there. It's not your fault. That's just the county's, the county's, county facilities department is being extremely unresponsive. I hope you're listening. And they got, in the latest round of budget cuts, they lost a person. So therefore, we're never going to cut the weeds in the cemeteries ever again. If you want the weeds in the cemeteries cut, you need to give us another body. I don't know. They'll soften on that. They probably already have. It takes Supervisor Veerkamp beating them over the head, I think. Next. This guy brought in a storage locker for himself. He had all his possessions organized there, right in the main mausoleum area. Next. And that's where he was sleeping. So I'm happy to tell you that we called the Placerville PPD on Friday and somebody showed up promptly and she promised to patrol that night. And I haven't heard back if the guy was apprehended, but he, his stuff didn't move over the weekend. And as of today, I guilted facilities into getting out there and dragging all this stuff away. So Chief Wren, thank you for the responsiveness. I'm not going to throw you under the bus this time, I promise. And anyway, yeah, the Placerville Police Department is always very responsive, but we're still not getting nighttime patrols that we know of. I mean, maybe, maybe they are patrolling and we just don't know it because it's the night. But it's very difficult because the places where the people hang out are way in the cemetery. So you wouldn't want to go there by yourself, no matter how well armed you are at night. So it's not easy. Okay, next. That should be about it. Oh yeah. It turns out that you spray enough defoliant and you actually prevent the star thistle from coming back, but the, this is mustard greens, which have these little bitty sticky seeds that get in your underwear. It's terrible. Next. All right. Let's try golden up one level and seeing if we can see what those folders are. Your view is way different than mine. All right. So where are we? Let's go, let's go. No, that's good. Just, just go next. I think we're, we're still in Old City there, aren't we? Yeah, this is more, more work from Old City. Just blast through these quickly. You can see one example of a historic headstone that's broke. And note the veining. This is again, that Indian Diggins marble that's so special. Next. This is a break. This is a repair that was done incorrectly. Somebody, you know, went to Home Depot and bought some glue. So, oops, that's all you need, right? No, it's conservation grade, special stuff and multi-parts and, you know, you're supposed to fly to the East Coast and take a week of training, and I'm not exaggerating, to be able to do this. But thankfully, Brian just watched a hundred hours of YouTube videos and figured it out and his work is holding up really well. Next. Here's Kohin again. Dr. Kohin, before and after. So why do we clean these old headstones? Because, you know, it's just lichen and moss and stuff, right? It looks good. The moss and the algae are actually okay. The lichen is not. It lives on the stone and it really likes marble. It weakens the inside and it chews up the face to the point where you can't read it. Now, some of the marble is very high quality. It turns out that's the stuff that was deeper in the ground, but a lot of it was low quality. I mean, these guys, these stone cutters in this era, they, they made their living on mantles and big columns in front of the state capitol and stuff, but they filled in with headstones. Well, you know that the headstones didn't get the best material. They got the scraps. So low quality marble, some of them you can't even read anymore, even after you clean them. But what's nice is that by cleaning them, we make them, A, we preserve their life a lot and B, you can see it. So it makes the cemetery more interesting because if you type this guy's name into your phone, it'll come up on Find a Grave and tell you all about how he was the medical consul to the Liberian something or another and went over there and came back and brought a gorilla with him and all kinds of eccentric stuff. And he came out to the West Coast and brought his brother with him who died of malaria in St. Louis and blah, blah, blah. All great history stuff. My goal, my hope, our hope is to make these places more interesting and engaging to the public, to the locals and to our visitors. Cemeteries should be an important component in visitor attraction. Everywhere else that has old cemeteries, it is, not here. Next. We straightened the leaners. There's Brian on the right and his trusty pal Crowe with a K on the left. Next. Here's Brian lovingly piecing one of these things back together. It takes hours and hours. After each step, you have to walk away and let this material cure sometimes for two weeks. So it's a labor of love. And the guy, by the way, lives in Sacramento. He drives up here to do this for us. They wouldn't let him touch the headstones in Sacramento. Have you been to the East Coast and taken a week's worth of classes? If not, you're not touching our headstones. Next. More Brian. Just see some of the rigs, rigs and jigs he uses to prop everything up. Next. There's downtown Placerville in the background. Next. I think we've seen some of these before. Couple of the odd fellows, they cleaned this headstone and it turned brown. I hate that when that happens. Some of the lower quality marble has iron in it. The sixty dollar a gallon biological cleaner we use to clean these things is a water base and that, that iron reacts and sometimes turns brown. The good news is at sixty bucks a gallon, this stuff is so miraculous, it keeps working after you leave and so those brown stains are gone within a week or two. But they didn't care. They were so proud of themselves. We, we formed a lot of partnerships with groups. The Odd Fellows were one. The Emblem Club I already mentioned. Next. This guy was an Emblem Club husband and I told him, I said, there's a lot of headstones completely buried underground in this place. If you go around and poke. And so he made a poker and went around for about twenty minutes and he found an eighteen fifty headstone underground and he was so proud of himself. Next. That's his wife. I just love this picture. Next. That's Brian doing some sort of weird rights over a broken headstone. I don't know what he's doing, but I like the picture. Next. Ah yeah, here we go. This is what it looked, this is what the Bee Babies plot looked like before we did anything. So one post was still up and it was just kind of drooping. Two bars on each side, total of eight bars. And they, they held up these ornate pieces that turned out to be one long piece. Next. We did an interim fix. I, I sent my welder volunteer out there and said, yeah, just weld the pieces back together. And he came back and said, that stuff is weird. You can't weld it. You know, and it's like, maybe we should do a little research first before we go out there. But anyway, he managed to patch it together this much, which it just looks like snaggletooth something. And I was not satisfied, so we took it all back down and it's in my garage, it's in my driveway. Next. Oh, Brian pointing to his handiwork. Next. I dug this veteran one out of the ground, took forever because it was one piece he couldn't find. He poked around for days and we still never found it all, but we did research and found out you can fill, there's filler that you can use. So we did that. Next. Here's, after he got it up on the ground and cleaned up, this is what it looked like. Next. This is the finished product. Pretty cool, huh? And it's not leaning. I was leaning. It's not leaning. Next. All right. Here we have a big LDS church guy wielding an axe. What's he doing? Well, there's a root that had pushed this VA headstone off and we had to chop that root. So we've got the Odd Fellow back on the right and then our stonemason volunteer on the left. He's fresh out of the monastery. Next. This is the, the one that was underground. This is the finished product. It's the Fuller Brothers. Looks good. Next. Back of the cemetery, kind of hard to see, but that's a tree fell from outside over the fence. I went in there one day and chopped it up. Next. Like that. And took it all home and burned it in my fireplace last year. Next. There's the view again. Carey House. Next. That guy again. Next. I think we've seen all these. That's good. Okay, we're done. Upper level. You guys are very patient. I wanted to show you this. The, the original stone carvers signed their work. Can you zoom at all, Dave? This is a fairly, so this is the bottom of the back of that headstone I just said to ignore. And this is Fish, I think. So if you're really a headstone geek, you collect specific stone carvers' work. And just to make it interesting, they only signed about one out of ten of their, their works. So you've got to like remember sort of what the ones that were signed looked like and then go from there. And so we've got a number, the whole practice seems to have wound up in the like eighteen seventies, eighties. So finding these things signed and Fish is one of the lesser known, there, there's only like a half dozen of these guys. One actually lived in Placerville. His name was House. Fish was a lesser known one of the Sacramento bunch. So this is very cool for me. Next. All right. Now, get out of here and see if there's anything else. And I'll start talking about our event. Save the Graves is coming up on the eighteenth and next month. Basically, looking at all these pictures, it's like, oh, you do cemetery restoration, right? Yes, but we're also a theater group. Study any of the how-to books on nonprofits and they tell you there's nothing more important than focus, focus, focus. So what do we do? Not focus. The theater event is core to all of our fundraising around the year for all the restoration work. I sell all those ads that you see in the program and sorry, you guys, there's more programs on the back table with other propaganda. And anyway, it's become very popular. If you haven't been, you should go. We keep the price low to make it available to everybody. And it turns out that, because having two diametrically different things to do isn't enough, we're now researchers that are keeping the stories of local history alive. Because this is Eldorado County. We had Sutter and Marshall and now it's today, right? Nothing, nothing really important happened between those times that we know of anyway. Well, it's not true. All sorts of important stuff happened and it was done by interesting people and that's who we feature in this event. You will never see John Marshall or Sutter in our event. You're going to see Archie Bosquit, who was a sheriff here and he chased some Folsom prison escapees around the county for a week and never found them. Bloody, horrible shootouts, just drama out the gizou. We portrayed it last year. Wildly popular. And, and poor old Archie, never caught them. He surrounded them on Manzanita Hill, up on Pleasant Valley Road, on Buck's Bar in Pleasant Valley. Had a hundred and fifty guys around there and they tried to burn them out and they got away. Well, actually before that, they killed two, two National Guardsmen. And so Archie didn't do so well. And so after researching this and writing the script and starting to rehearse, we found a little interesting tidbit. It's Wendy Thomas's great grandfather. And it's like, oh no, this is not exactly a great glowing story. You know, she's not going to be happy about this. But you guys probably know Wendy. She loved it. She had all sorts of personal artifacts. She showed up on the, her and her mom showed up on the morning of the event and pinned the original Bosquit badge on the actor portraying him. And that picture is?
On this side.
On this side. That picture is right there. So that's Judy Cutler, Wendy's mom. That guy. Pretty good looking, huh? Anyway, the event, you got, the city's been very supportive. Early on, you know, it's like the worst possible place on earth to stage a big theatrical event. There's no water, there's no electricity. The terrain is abysmal. It's absolutely dangerous. It's uphill enough that a lot of the older folks struggle with it. We have to run shuttles. There's no place to park. It's a nightmare. And we do it every year. So anyway, we borrow some stuff from you, I think some traffic cones and stuff and you guys are always very supportive. Early on, we blocked half of the road and you helped us with that. And we realized we don't really need to do that. So anyway, coming up on the eighteenth this year, the theme is women of character. So we've got some fascinating female characters, some of which you might have heard of, but some of which you probably haven't. Last thing I'll mention, and there's pictures, but you don't need to show them, they're on the poster there. Last year, we took a TOT grant, a Veterans TOT grant and did a whole mess of Veterans projects, some of which didn't go so great because researching these things is hard. But we ended up creating a nice Veterans Memorial Area in Placerville Union Cemetery and with a big rock that came off the Refetto Ranch and Brian and Lori Veerkamp brought it down Main Street in one of Doug's big trucks. And we had a nice message carved on it. We put a bench and a big interpretive sign explaining the Grand Army of the Republic. It's, it's right over the Grand Army of the Republic section in the cemetery. The Grand Army of the Republic was a Fraternal Order of Civil War Veterans. And old places and old cemeteries have little sections for these guys and we've got one here in Placerville, but everybody seems to have forgotten it. So anyway, the last and most important thing we did is tried to figure out who all the veterans in Union Cemetery are. There's, there's like sixty-five hundred burials there and I foolishly assumed we could just send a database extract to the VA and they just send us back a list and say, yes, yes, no, no. Foolish me. Everyone had to be looked up on ancestry.com individually. It took months. Without the LDS Genealogy Center over on Cedar Ravine, we still wouldn't be done. And then we had to try to find the requisite records to the National Archive to get their disinterment record. These are like ghost veterans. They have no headstone. They have no relatives. They have no nothing. We, all of our volunteer researchers came up empty. We ended up hiring someone who figured it out and got, satisfied the VA and the headstones started rolling in. it out and got, satisfied the VA, and the headstones started rolling in. By this time, I had to give half of the TOT money back because the grant had expired, and they refused to allow me an extension. And so we took volunteers, a bunch of old guys, well, not that old, but you know, guys like this, out there, and did it ourselves. Turns out planting these VA stones is pretty simple, they, they don't use mortar, it's just a lot of that gravel I talked about. But they still need to be hauled, and, and you know, it's a ridiculous amount of work for old men to do. But we got a dozen of them in the ground, and we got another dozen to go. And so we're trying to do good work in the community. I do a lot of speaking engagements, I was at the Taxpayers Association yesterday, and get this, anybody, anybody here know about the Taxpayers Association, roughly what they're about? They fully endorsed a cemetery tax in El Dorado County to support our cemeteries. That's like heresy. I mean, these guys are against everything that starts with the letter T and ends with the letter X. So it was pretty amazing. And I really believe that these places bring people together, I've seen it. We do large volunteer projects with kids, made, made a great hookup with two large groups in El Dorado Hills, National Charity League and Boys Team Charity. And they're great, they bring a, especially because they bring a parent, but they're good kids anyway, but you know, you don't really want to release 20 or 30 kids in a six-acre cemetery full of fragile old headstones, unmonitored. And so the fact that they've got a parent, and they, they clean headstones, they help us straighten them, and they put their hands on them, and they, they, they own them, you know, they, I, I tell them all, you're, you're going to bring your kids back here and see how this is doing in 20 years, and you'll teach them how to do what I taught you how to do today. And hopefully, the message is taken. So, that's it. 15 minutes, right? Any questions?
I don't, I don't think so, no. Thank you so much for all of this, it's amazing work, and the Save the Graves thing is a lot of fun. So would anybody wish to comment on this item? All right, oh, okay.
Good evening, I'm the old guy. Well, I had a grandfather here, he wasn't a 49er, he was a 48er. He would be 197, 199 years old now. And so he was born in 1846, I was born in 1946, I will be a spitting image of him this year, I'm 199 years old. So anyway, I want to thank Mike, you know, I always talk about thinking outside of the box. Close your eyes and tell me where you are if you're thinking outside of the box. Come on, Jackie, you can do it. You're in the box. What do we have in the box? A lot of talkers and a lot of thinkers, there are very few doers. You have a man right here I've known for a long time, he started this project, I had a little bit to help, but not much, and he started there because he has the passion. And the passion will not follow you, you have to lead the passion, and that's what he's done. And John, you've been all over the world supposedly, and every place else you've been, what happens when you go to a cemetery? Anybody been to Deadwood? Well, Bill's buried there, next to Calamity Jane, maybe, and Lady Up Top was the first woman lawyer in the Dakotas. And you know what? It's a beautiful place. And it's one of the places that allows the American flag to fly all night. It's got a light on it, which is required, but it's one of the very few places that's authorized by the US Congress. So, what are we going to do about our Dust Bowl? Our brown place? Okay, we have volunteers, you all save one volunteer, so they'll go there. So I think along the way, this is a project. It's to put water in that place. Now, there's always the time, who's going to pay for it? Does the city pay for it? Does the county pay for it? Well, maybe we go to EID and get them to pay for part of it, you know, we could twist some arms and be happy with people. So I'm going to challenge you folks here, all of you folks, not just the board, but everybody here, is to put some water up there, make Placerville unique in the area. Because we are the gateway to the motorload. So let's show people what a gateway really is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? All righty, we'll bring it back up here, lots to think about there. Okay, it's time for our consent calendar now. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody want to pull something from our very sparse consent calendar?
I do have a quick correction to the minutes, I don't know if we were able to figure out...
You go right ahead.
Okay, who made the motion on that for the consent calendar? You know, the, the minutes show that Councilmember No made the motion and seconded it.
Oh.
Correct on item 7.6 of the minutes.
Correct, yes.
Right, so we'll correct that to State Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, all right. There's nothing being pulled from our consent calendar. Does anybody wish to comment on our consent calendar? No, thank you very much, we'll bring it back here. Do I have a motion with that change?
I will move the consent calendar with the changes.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you. All righty, public comment, non-agenda items. Disportion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matters not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, which I will. Please follow the golden rule, treat each other with dignity, think about what you're saying when you get up there. But say anything you want, actually. So, do we have any oral communications? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, bringing it back up here. Do we have any written communication?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. There were no items pulled from the consent calendar, we have no ordinances. We had a public hearing, but it was removed when we approved the agenda, so we are going to go directly to our discussion and action items. Ooh, there's some long ones here. Consider approving budget appropriations totaling $2,203,376, authorizing issuance of NTP Number 3 to REY Engineers, Inc., in the amount of $36,913, approving an agreement for engineering services with Dewberry Engineers, Inc., in the amount of $362,390.72, approving a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $1,570,798.78, authorizing construction contract change order authority to the city manager, up to $150,000, and ratifying utility agreements with AT&amp;T and the El Dorado Irrigation District totaling $3,376 for the Placerville Drive Pedestrian Connectivity Project. Ms. Savage.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The Placerville Drive Pedestrian Connectivity Project will construct sidewalk on one side of the street on Placerville Drive from the Fair Lane US 50 intersection to Armory Drive. The project also includes crosswalk improvements at the fairgrounds crosswalk and pavement grind and overlay throughout the project's limits. This is considered an interim solution to address immediate need for pedestrian safety improvements until the future construction of the Western Placerville Interchanges Project Phase 3, which will include much more significant road widening on Placerville Drive. The final design, rideaway and utility coordination phases are complete, and the Engineering Department advertised and published the bid package on July 29th. A public bid opening was held on August 19th, and two bids were received. One from Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the amount of $1,570,798.78, and the second from Martin Brothers Construction in the amount of $1,627,000. Staff performed an analysis of the apparent low bidder's proposal and found it to be in conformance with the requirements of the contract documents, including exceeding the construction contract DB Eagle. As such, staff is recommending approval of a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering. Staff is proposing to hold a construction contingency of approximately 10%, for unforeseen and change conditions encountered during construction. This is less than we typically do on other projects, because this project does not include a significant amount of underground utility work, which we all know can be challenging. This item also includes staff's recommendation to issue notice to proceed to REY Engineers for construction engineering support services, ratifying two utility agreements with EID and AT&amp;T, so that the contractor can perform work to adjust those utilities to grade. And staff is also recommending approval of an agreement for engineering services with Dewberry Engineers for construction management and inspection services. I wanted to say, and I've given them a lot of praise before, but we are very fortunate to have Dewberry Engineers on board, we have a very committed team, and Dion Carr, the resident engineer, has already been engaged and involved in project coordination, especially as it relates to the broadband construction work happening right now within the project limits, to ensure that we will have no conflicts when the project starts. Having a trusted construction manager is paramount to ensure the success of a construction project. Staff respectfully requests approval of budget appropriations totaling $2,203,376, which includes federal CMAC funding and local funds. The Engineering Department set out this year with a goal to construct three projects this summer in 2025, and it brings me great joy to bring this project forward today, which is the third project. We're a small but mighty department with only two full-time engineers, and I'm really grateful to our staff for their dedication to project delivery. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item? All righty, would the public like to comment on this item?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I'm glad to see this one come forward, because the fairgrounds has been a place where you've just kind of held your breath every time the fair was on, that nobody got hurt when they were trying to cross the street and to get to the fair and, and around into this area. So I'm glad to see this one come forward, and I think that our engineering staff is small but mighty, they have done an amazing job to put this together.
Well, thank you, Sue. And you are right in every word. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll bring it back up here. What is the pleasure of this body?
I will move staff's recommendation.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. Thank you very much. Item 12.2. Consider abolishing the Assistant City Manager/ Director of Finance position effective October 4, 2025, approving the Director of Finance position effective October 4, 2025, approving a job description for the Director of Finance position effective October 4, 2025. We're seeing a trend here. And approving and affirming a salary schedule effective September 27, 2025, and that happens to be my wife and mine's 44th wedding anniversary. Just a little addition there. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor Clarici, members of the council. So with the upcoming promotion of the Assistant City Manager/ Director of Finance to the City Manager position upon Mr. Morris's upcoming retirement effective October 3 of this year, staff is recommending that the Assistant City Manager/ Director of Finance position revert back to a Director of Finance position. The proposed salary schedule for the Director of Finance is shown on page 2 of the report. In the coming year, staff will carefully evaluate the city's need for an Assistant Finance, or City Manager position, and any desire of executive management staff who may be interested in such an assignment. The City Council met in closed session on August 26 of this year and announced in open session the appointment of Natalie Torancasa, the current Assistant Finance Director, as the interim Director of Finance effective October 4 of this year. As a strategy in attracting and retaining a new employee for Ms. Torancasa's old position and generating much-needed budget savings, staff recommends that soon-to-become vacant Assistant Finance Director position be underfilled with an additional accountant position. During the recruitment, staff plans on hiring a temporary part-time accountant, retired and new tenant, who worked for the Finance Department a few years ago. This strategy will help Ms. Torancasa get settled into her new position as the interim director, allow her time to assess the current needs of the Finance Department, and continue the basic functions of the old Assistant Finance Director position without any interruptions. The retired and new tenant assignment would then discontinue once the full-time accountant is hired. The projected annual cost savings from the proposed reorganization within the Finance Department is $124,225. The projected cost savings from the proposed reorganization within the Finance Department for fiscal year 25-26 is $93,885. The adopted fiscal year 25-26 operating budget did not assume the proposed reorganization within the Finance Department, so the $93,000 projected savings from the reorganization will shore up, help shore up the operating budget by an equal amount. So with that, staff respectfully requests that the City Council approve the reorganization plan within the Finance Department, including replacing the existing Assistant City Manager/ Director of Finance position with the Director of Finance position, and approving a new job description and salary schedule for that position. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? We have no questions. Do we have any comments? We have no comments. We will bring it back here. What is the pleasure of this body?
I'll move item 12.2. I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item 12.3. Consider rescinding City Resolution Number 9396 and adopting a resolution retroactively approving and affirming increases in the holiday pay, master police officer pay, post-incentive pay, and uniform allowance and longevity pay for the Chief of Police, Police Commander, and Police Lieutenant positions effective the first full-pay period in July 2021. No one would ever accuse the gears of government running too quickly, I imagine. I am sure there's a perfectly good reason why we're dealing with something from four years ago. Mr. Warren?
Members of the council, so yes, this is something we've been working for a long time. And as a reminder, the Chief of Police, Police Commander, Police Lieutenant are sworn administrative positions that are included in the executive management unit, which is unrepresented. The city has a longstanding past practice of providing the sworn administrative positions, including those positions mentioned earlier, with the same cost of living adjustment, add-on pay types, including holiday pay, longevity pay, master police officer pay, post-incentive pay, and uniform allowance, as those approved by employees of the Placerville Police Officers' Association, which are credible for CalPERS retirement base pay purposes. The amount of each pay type is shown on page 2 of the report. CalPERS began inquiring about the City Council approving these pay types for sworn administrative employees back in October of '24. The City Council adopted Resolution 8403, as mentioned earlier, at its meeting March 22, 2016, which addressed longevity pay for sworn administrative positions. Staff submitted a copy of that resolution to CalPERS staff in November of last year. At its meeting held on February 11 of this year, the City Council adopted Resolution 9396, which addressed holiday pay, master police pay, post-incentive pay, and uniform allowance for sworn administrative positions. On April 2 of this year, the CalPERS staff informed us that the City Resolution 8403 does not substantiate longevity pay for sworn administrative employees, because it contains a sunset date of June 30, 2017. However, that sunset was intended only for a one-time distribution to employees at that time. To resolve this issue, CalPERS staff asked that the city adopt a new resolution similar to Resolution 9396 that includes longevity pay, which is before you tonight. Although the new pay rates mentioned earlier are already being paid to eligible sworn administrative staff, they will not be credible for CalPERS retirement pay base purposes until the City Council approves the resolution. It's important that the City Council approve the resolution to ensure the city's sworn administrative staff receive the proportional share of retirement benefits as compared to their PPOA counterparts. The total projected annual cost of the pay types, the increase in pay types, is $12,636, which is included in your 25-26 operating budget, and staff recommends that you adopt the resolution as... And staff recommends that you adopt the resolution as presented. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on this item? Hearing none. Does the public wish to comment on this very old item?
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. Looks to me like CalPERS strikes again.
Well.
It just straightens out all the mess of CalPERS, so we need to just do it.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. All right. Any other comment on this item? All right, let's bring it back up here for action.
I will move staff's recommendation.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado County Transit, we... I'm sorry, what was 12.4? Okay. 12.4. Consider approving a request for local advanced construction authorization for the Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Savage.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm sorry, this won't be short. This is important. The Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project proposes to replace the existing two-lane bridge with a two-lane bridge plus two-way left turn lane, sidewalks on both sides of the street, and Class II bike lanes. The bridge replacement project limits span from Perouse Road to approximately 523 Placerville Drive, which is a few businesses east of the bridge. The project improvements align with the adjacent improvements that are proposed for the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project. The project has completed the environmental phase. The final design and right-of-way phases are currently underway, and the construction phase is expected to begin in 2026. This project has been included in the Highway Bridge Program for funding since 1997. It started out as a simple bridge rehab project, later evolved to a full bridge replacement and widening the road to four lanes, and then was reduced to a two-lane bridge project, which is what we are proposing today, after updated traffic studies demonstrated that the road did not need to be widened to four lanes. In September of 2024, the Highway Bridge Program approved a cost adjustment for updated project costs in the final design, right-of-way, and construction phases of the project. At that time, the construction funds were programmed in federal fiscal year 2425. The HBP funding is currently programmed with $15,797,000 for the construction phase, which includes almost $14 million in HBP funds and a local match commitment of $1.8 million. The project also includes $679,000 in non-participating local costs. Since last fall, we faced unanticipated project delays primarily related to PG&E utility relocations and right-of-way transactions that are needed to complete the relocations. Staff notified Caltrans Local Assistance of these delays and let them know that we would not be able to make the deadline for submitting the request for authorization of construction funding this year. We were informed that in accordance with the Local Assistance Program guidelines for the Highway Bridge Program, failure to meet the deadline means that the HBP funding gets moved out to the last year of the FSTIP, which in this case is federal fiscal year 2728. Staff intends to construct the Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project at the same time as the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project under one construction contract. If the bridge project were to be delayed until 2728, the BikePed project would have to be built first due to the ATP funding timeline, and the existing bridge would remain as an unsafe pinch point in the travel lanes, and there would be a significant and unsafe gap in the sidewalk and bike lanes until the bridge is replaced. Once we were informed of this, staff met with Caltrans Local Assistance, the Caltrans HBP managers, and the Eldorado County Transportation Commission on August 25 to discuss the path forward and options for funding the project prior to fiscal year 2728. The HBP managers said that the city can request local advanced construction authorization for fiscal year 2526. When a local agency requests advanced construction, it's a financial commitment and an understanding that there is currently insufficient federal funds available for the work, and the local agency commits to moving forward with local funding, and federal reimbursement is not guaranteed. The letter requesting local advanced construction must be submitted to Caltrans Local Assistance by September 12 for this upcoming year. The HBP managers also informed us that following the release of the October 2025 funded bridge project list, the city can then request expedited project selection procedures in March 2026 to convert the local AC funds to federal HBP funds for authorization in April. If a project is already authorized under local AC, then the project is considered a higher priority for HBP funding than projects that are not. Since this project is a mid-level project, mid-level cost project because it's over $15 million, the Highway Bridge Program funds have to be split over two fiscal years. So we can only request half of the HBP funds for conversion in fiscal year 2526. We then have to wait and request the EPSP conversion, that's the expedited procedures, for the second half of the funds in fiscal year 2627, which starts on October 1, 2026. So knowing all of this information, we laid out a critical path milestone schedule for both the bridge project and the BikePed project in very good detail to determine if this option is even possible. Based on the schedules, we believe that all local AC funds would be converted to HBP funds before the contractor ever begins work, thereby eliminating the need for the city to expend any additional local funds before the HBP funds are converted. There are some risks because we do have to meet the schedule, but we are still, staff is respectfully requesting approval to submit a request for local advanced construction authorization for fiscal year 2526 and authorizing the city manager to execute the letter. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much for that very good report, by the way. And I'm sorry I blew right past your agenda item. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, are there any comments on this project?
Sue Rodman, again. It sounds like this time it's good old PG&E that strikes again.
Don't say the words.
Don't say what?
Don't say PG&E. It just hurts my ears. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, it hurts my ears, too. Hurts all of us. PG&E has been one of the... It is the worst utility company I have ever had the displeasure to work with, either as a customer or as a person trying to work on projects.
Yes.
When I worked for the Forest Service, they were horrible. And they're still horrible. They have not improved. And it looks like this is about the best that we can do. And again, if it weren't that we had such a great engineering department, we would be sunk on this one. So if anybody could make PG&E behave, it would be really nice, but I have very small hopes for that. Experience says that's not going to happen. But I think that we've come, our engineering department has come up with probably the best solution that we can find for this. Because this is a project that does need to be done.
Well, thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? All right, we're bringing it back up here. Is the, what's the pleasure of this? Do we have any, any comments or questions first? Okay. Do, let, go.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. All right, now, we can go to item 13, like I wanted to before. Eldorado County Transit Authority?
We awarded a contract for the bus parking lot rehab and zero emission infrastructure.
There we did that, yes. Eldorado County Transportation Commission?
We did not meet.
OAFCO?
We did not meet.
SECOG? They didn't meet. They meet next week. Pioneer Community Energy Board?
We did not meet.
Placerville Fire Safe Council?
I did not attend.
Opportunity Knox?
Yes, we did meet. Couple of items of interest for the city. So we're gearing up for our PIT count, which is the homeless count that we do every year. That's going to take place in January, so we got the ball rolling on that. We also talked, so emergency housing vouchers, which were ramped up during COVID, are ending. So we're going through the process of unwinding and trying to figure out alternatives on how to help the families that are taking advantage of that program right now. And we also talked about the issue with the federal and state funding. There's a, the new federal administration is moving away from low barrier and harm reduction programs and moving towards more accountability and enforcement. And so there's a wide disparity between federal and state policies, so they're trying to navigate that scenario. But other than that, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none. City manager and staff reports? We got none. Upcoming items, apparently there aren't any. So it's going to be a real quick last meeting.
We will have a meeting. There are some items.
We'll blow through that agenda. Okay, so seeing none of those things. Does anybody have any comments on the last few items? I don't imagine anybody does. Okay, great. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.